All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Seegrist, can you please do real call?
Borninski.
Here.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
Good evening.
Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Seegrist is here. Slavens.
Good evening.
Anne Sniteman.
I am present.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the following amendments? For the consent calendar, C-10, consider a request to relinquish township-held donation funds to the Canton Firefighters Charity Foundation. C-11, consider approval to schedule show cause hearing for one property subject to dangerous building hearing orders. And for the general calendar, G-13, consider appointment and reappointment to the planning commission.
So moved.
Aye.
Moved by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to approve, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for November 23rd and 30th, 2021?
So moved.
By Clerk Seegrist, supported by Trustee Sniteman. Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, thank you. The next item is public comments on agenda items only at the beginning of the meeting. So we're now at the portion of the meeting designated for public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the board is invited to at this time. We appreciate that individuals please identify themselves by name and community of residence while limiting their comments to three minutes. This is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the board about their views and provide input for us to take into the decision-making process of the meeting. It's not a time for question and ask answers. If you seek information about the administration of the township government or looking for response, please follow up with township staff on particular issues at the end of the meeting or in the morning, and we will do the other public comment at the end of the meeting. But this first one is for agenda items only. Do we have anybody speaking to the agenda items? Any comment on the agenda items? Nope. Okay, do we have any online? Anyone on agenda items? Okay, thank you.
Almost all township employees.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a presentation. We will have Stephanie Johnson give us a legislative update. Oh, payment of bills, that's not, oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion to pay the bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Motion to pay the bills by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Sniteman. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Paying the bills, motion passes. Great, thank you. Do we see Stephanie online?
I have promoted her to panelist, and she is ready when you are.
Okay. This is Stephanie Johnson from Lansing. Welcome, Stephanie. If you can hear us, you can go ahead and begin.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. I'm going to give you a brief legislative update. There is a lot happening. As a matter of fact, the House and Senate are still in session as we speak, finishing up some, wrapping up some year-end issues in legislation before they go on recess until the first of the year. As you know, we've had a lot of federal dollars come into the state. I think they're still expecting a significant amount of more federal dollars coming in, and that's created some, a lot of discussion around how to spend these dollars. Most of these are related to COVID funding, ARPA dollars, federal ARPA dollars, and they have some strings attached to them, and we also know that they're one-time dollars. So the legislature is really looking at these hard to try to determine how best to spend these to have the biggest bang for their buck. They're also trying to do real transformational projects that won't require any ongoing funding requirements into the future. They have till 2023 to spend most of these dollars, and so it's going to take a while for them to figure all of this out. Tonight, they're actually allocating just a small portion of these dollars. It's over $12 billion that the state has to look at projects and try to determine where they want to utilize these dollars. The first major piece that they're doing with the dollars right now is an economic development package. They have a package of bills and legislative appropriation supplemental to the tune of about a billion dollars to create various programs and grants within the economic development project and program to encourage business development and create new opportunities for jobs and companies to come in. This is largely in response to Ford making the decision to locate another one of their new plants in Tennessee. That really kind of hit the state hard, kind of was a sucker punch for a lot of the legislators and the governors. So they're trying to come up with opportunities and ways to which to incentivize some of these businesses to locate in Michigan and look more favorably upon expanding their processes in Michigan. So they're wrapping that up now. They're debating it as we speak here. In addition, the House has passed another supplemental that's going to, is sitting in the Senate right now. It's going to stay there until the first of the year for sure. They're not going to, they're not going to be able to wrap that up before they end. That supplemental, again, allocates some federal dollars to first responders, police, community policing programs, equipment, as well as retention and recruitment funding to lure individuals into those professions, firefighters, EMS, and police officers. As you know, we are having a real crisis across the state, and it's a national crisis in trying to recruit and draw individuals into these professions. So there are going to, there's going to be opportunities in that supplemental to, for communities to help promote more and train more individuals to do those jobs. But again, that supplemental is now in the Senate. It has passed the House. It's in the Senate. Furthermore, they are also closing the books on the previous fiscal year. We have had higher than anticipated revenue. As a matter of fact, in November, our revenue was 8% more than projected. So they're, they're using some of these dollars for the economic package that I indicated, as well as some further opportunities to expand COVID testing for nursing homes, for health communities, for immigrant and refugee services, and some other, not, not just the testing, but to expand opportunities for vaccination, particularly for those immigrant and refugee communities. The Secretary of State has come out today with a notice saying that it's no longer going, you're no longer going to have COVID as an excuse for not having a current tag or license plate on your car. The backlog at the Secretary of State has been all but eliminated. So they're going to probably start cracking down on that here soon. I know when I drive on the highway, it's still, we'll see cars pass me that won't have a current tag or won't have a license plate on, and so that's no longer going to be acceptable. In addition to that, we have had with the election that took place in November, we had several members run for, several House members run for Senate offices, and they were successful. In addition to that, we did have one legislator pass away in the House. So there was four vacant, or three vacant House seats in the Senate, in the House, and so the governor has called for a special election. It's going to be early next year, the primary in February, the special election in March, I believe. So there is going to be a special election to fill those vacancies. Going in, that way, both the Senate chamber and the House chamber will have a full group of, a full legislative slate. In addition to that, obviously, going into the next year, probably one of the bigger items that's occupying a lot of legislators' time and their, their discussion among people, or at least among themselves, is redistricting. We are looking at probably having the redistricting maps completed by the end of the month by the commission, and those will go out, and then they will likely be challenged, and likely will go through the court process. I anticipate the redistricting maps to be completed at, you know, early in the new year. There is, there's some significant changes in some of these districts, and that is going to create a situation where there might be legislators who are going to be running against one another in a primary. There may be legislators moving to other parts of their current district so they can run in the new district. That's going to create some real uncertainty going forward. We are going into an election year, obviously, where the governor, secretary of state, attorney general, all the senators, and the House of Representatives will be up for reelection. So next year is going to be an interesting year. Not only will there be nearly $12 billion to try to allocate and expend in a way that's wise and going to create some real change across the state, but we're also facing a significant election year. So that's going to be, it's kind of a, what will happen is likely the beginning of the year, you'll see a flurry of activity, but as the year goes on, it's probably going to be harder and harder for a lot of legislation to get through until after the election time is, is over, and we enter what we call lamed up, which can be kind of a crazy time in Michigan, in the Michigan capital. But we will bear it and go through it the way we always do, and hope that we are successful in seeing a lot of those dollars allocated that really enhance communities, whether it be road projects, infrastructure projects. There is a lot of talk about putting significant amount of dollars towards water quality as far as communities go for drinking water. We know we have some real issues. Obviously, Ben Harbor has been the latest with the lead situation, and trying to advance the state, particularly on the infrastructure side, to create some, some better quality. And in the House, the House seems to be really focused on law enforcement opportunities, retention and recruitment of law enforcement, and first responders. The Senate is very focused on economic development. They kind of, they seem to be leading a lot of that charge on economic development front, and the governor is sort of got her hands in all these various pots. We anticipate the governor's State of the State address to be towards the end of January of next, of the, of the next New Year coming up, and that is her opportunity to lay out her plans for the next year, what her goals are. So we will, we have more of insight into what to anticipate coming from the governor's office. And likely about a week after, maybe two weeks after the State of the State, we will see the executive budget recommendation being put forward. And again, that not only supports the plans that she lays out in her State of the State, but then that's the opportunity for the legislature to also put their thumbprint on what they want to see and how, the direction that they want to see the state go in. I think you will see a mix of the federal ARPA dollars with the state budgets kind of being mixed going forward. I think we will see a lot of what we call supplementals, which are mid-year adjustments to, to the current year budget as they begin to appropriate the federal dollars. You likely won't see it all happen at once. It'll take some time to get through those and to put together a thoughtful plan going forward, and I think they'll be doing it in piecemeal as, as the year continues. So with that, I'm open to any questions that you folks might have.
Any questions, comments? No? Steven?
Yes, thank you, Stephanie. I think we got some word on some of the economic stimulus stuff, and I'm probably not using the right terms. Others here know them. Could have effect on our revenues, depending on how they assist businesses with tax cuts? Is that something for us to be concerned about?
There is an element to personal property tax in this, and the personal income tax. And so as I stated earlier, they're, they're debating it right now. I don't have the final result of that, but there is going to be some ramifications to that going forward, at least in the short term, to, but a large part of that billion-dollar investment that they're debating right now is coming from federal ARPA dollars as well.
So is there something we should be proactive in doing along with other municipalities to ensure that we don't lose some of those tax revenues and whatever they implement?
Yeah, and I think we are. We're kind of watching this as it goes through. We have been communicating with your local officials, your local legislators on a large scale. We're working with MML and the counties, as well as the Township Association, trying to watch this as it goes forward. Again, a large portion of this is federal ARPA dollars, and the tax implications, to my understanding at this point, are temporary and are going to be backfilled by those federal dollars.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anne, go ahead.
Thanks, Stephanie. I just have a real quick question, and it's on House Bill 5351, and that's the personal property tax, where they're going to be bumping it up, I know, past the House. And I know we've all been sending letters to the Senate head. Do you have any feel on where that, what's, where that's going to end up?
At this time, I don't have a good sense of that one. It has, it is sitting in the Senate at the moment. It's, my understanding, it's not part of the broader package that's being debated at the moment, but I, I don't have a good feel for that at the, right now.
Kind of encourage the Senate. We've sent letters on that, but if you could as well, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did submit a card in opposition to that as well.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right, thank you, Stephanie. Thanks, and if we don't see you, have a happy holidays. I'm sure we'll be talking to you, but if we don't see you in person.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is intern project video. So Sarah Shock, do you see her out there? She sent us a video. She's been working with us all since September. Trustee Borninski has really taken her under her wing and helped her with this presentation and learning about our township and what we have going on in terms of the board goals. And Sarah is going to tell you a little bit about her degree in the beginning, so you'll understand why she's going to talk to us. But she's, she was a great student, and she's got a great presentation. She's not here with us today. She is on, online, but we are going to show her video. She's going to talk, tell you about herself and her project. So let me see if I can share that.
I'm a little shy, though, so I'm going to be quiet during the presentation, so.
So Sarah's shy.
That's fine, Sarah.
I don't know how this is going to work out with audio. We'll figure it out when I press right.
Okay, so. Trevor?
Trevor's in back. Your computer is currently muted, which is required. Otherwise, it will provide feedback, but we have a video, so.
I hear Trevor. I think I do.
Sorry?
I thought I heard Trevor coming.
Trevor, if I shut off the microphone and turn this on, will you get the feedback? If I shut this one off and turn this one on.
You should turn off our microphones, do you think?
All right, I'll turn mine off while we can get a shot.
Oops.
So I have, now I'm muted right now.
So I probably didn't optimize it for video.
Can we go into your share screen?
Right here?
Mm-hmm.
Oops, stop.
I saw the host.
We go up top to the green bar. It should allow you to go in and make some options when you start your share screen.
Yeah.
Yep.
I know, so you want to select share screen, right?
Mm-hmm. So just select the main.
Click on the button.
Tab. Yep.
Right here, the green or?
Yep, right there. Okay.
I'll optimize it for you. Okay.
And then we want to make sure this is low. So when you hit share, you go down here. You need a little bit of sound here, so just take that down to about 10.
Hello, my name is Sarah Shock. I have been a sustainability intern for the township since September of this year, and today will be my last day. For this presentation, I will talk a little about myself and what I have accomplished during this internship. Then, I will be explaining what I believe should be in the Township Sustainability Plan. I am a senior at Eastern Michigan University, technically a super senior at this point, actually. Because of how I spaced out my credit hours, it has taken me a little over four years to get enough credits to graduate. I will be graduating with honors this semester. My major is Environmental Science, Society Concentration. This relatively new major is tailored towards students who wish to work in the field of sustainability. This internship is absolutely ideal for me, and I hope to one day find a career similar to this. In my free time, I like to crochet, play Pokemon Go, and play Roblox games. I know Roblox is targeted at kids, but I started playing because of my two youngest siblings, and some of the games are actually pretty nice. Here are a few of the toys I have crocheted. I bought the pattern for Titus the T-Rex online, while I personally designed those two spritzy Pokemon. Here is a list of my internship accomplishments. I'm quite happy with the results of the Google Form survey and of what I learned from Ann Arbor's Climate Action Plan. I am especially proud of the Eagle FOIA requests, as well as of what I've been able to do with the information I received from them. Here I am with the map I later colored in to show the positions of township-owned parcels with wetlands, drains, and streams. Coloring in this map was both informative and satisfying. Here I am with Kate Borninski and Anne Marie Graham Hudak. They have been great to work with. Sharona Gloucester took this photo. It was nice saying hi to her every time I came to the office. The survey I made for Canton Township employees received 130 responses. From what I understand, this is nearly half of all the employees. I think that's quite impressive, and I know Anne Marie and Kate agree with me. I would like to add that Toshia Johnson is the person who distributed the survey via email, and I appreciate that. I will be sharing some of the data I received from this survey. Of the options they were given, employees voted quality of life as their sustainability topic of highest concern. Mobility ranks the lowest out of these, although this could be because it wasn't defined. Here's a graph of which department each responder belongs to. Based on what I've learned about the supervisor's office's setup, this appears to fit with the total number of people in each department. The survey asked employees for suggestions to improve Canton's sustainability. Kate Borninski took those suggestions and consolidated them, allowing me to make this graph. Fifty-nine of the 130 responders provided suggestions. Eighty-nine suggestions are shown on this chart because some responders have multiple suggestions. The most common suggestion was to increase recycling/decrease use of non-reusables, which I would guess is because recycling is such a well-known pro-environmental practice. However, there's a wonderful variety of responses, enough to warrant its own presentation. If you would like to see these suggestions or any of the other results of the employee form, email me at the address shown under the graph's title. I have a copy without the responders' names or email addresses. I have also removed the "no," "not applicable," etc. responses to the open-ended questions. Most of the following items are from Canton Township's Community Strategic Plan, "You Belong Here," and most of the ones that aren't from there are from Ann Arbor's Climate Action Plan. Some of them are my own ideas, based on my coursework, though. Important note: A sustainability plan is more complicated than other plans you may be familiar with. It's a plan of many plans, each of equal importance. Small details should not be ignored in the interest of cutting corners. I got excited by small details constantly as I made this presentation, which hopefully conveys how complicated this is. We are part of a greater community, Michigan, the US, even the world, and in order for change to be visible, everyone must take part, not just Canton Township. The township is one small piece in saving the planet, but that doesn't make us less important. However, it does mean that the impact of our actions will take time to become evident. Section 1, Protect and Foster Local Ecosystems. According to Michigan State University, quote, "Native plants can be easily incorporated into a new or existing landscape to provide natural beauty and enhanced habitat for wildlife." When properly selected and placed, native plants also benefit our environment through reduced water use and less need for pesticides and fertilizers. To top it off, native plants can result in lower long-term maintenance costs, increased plant hardiness, and less work, unquote. This supports the plan to landscape Ford Road with native plants. Vaguely related and also important, it would be a great idea to preserve property along drains, creeks, and streams for additional green space. These water bodies give rainwater somewhere to go besides our buildings, so by keeping them clear of obstruction, we may be able to counter the record flooding we have been facing. Fortunately, one of the actions we could take to keep the waterways clear is straightforward: fighting off invasive phragmities, shown in the image on the left. To wrap this back to the native plants pilot, some of our residents may be unhappy that we are removing these invasive phragmities, as Anne Marie and Kate have stated that some people like how they look. However, by educating them and assuring them that the government is taking efforts to keep Canton beautiful in an environmentally friendly way, such as with the native plants pilot, they may be more willing to accept this change. Pocket parks would not only help achieve the Canton Township Strategic Plan goal of having a park within a 10-minute walking distance of every resident, access to parks has also been shown to be good for mental and physical health. Developing Ridge Road Park into a more passive nature area will help residents learn about nature in a safe and convenient way. Trails are recreational structures that wildlife can adjust to, I think. They take up minimal space and can easily be crossed by animals. Also, longer trails mean more space for walking, biking, and jogging, which is good for physical health. According to the Canton Leisure Services' five-year Recreation Master Plan, a 2019 survey shows that Canton residents have shown interest in each of the items on this slide. Section 2, Greenhouse Gases. Michigan's goal is to become carbon neutral by 2050. Canton's goal is to exceed state goals. Note that the three molecules on this slide, carbon dioxide, methane, and nitrous oxide, are the only molecules I am referring to when I say greenhouse gases in this presentation. Monitoring carbon dioxide emissions is a goal from Ann Arbor's Climate Action Plan. As referenced earlier in this presentation, I submitted a FOIA request to Eagle about the 2019 and 2020 emissions of greenhouse gases and air pollutants in and around Canton. I had quite a bit of fun looking at the data I received from this request because it was so informative. I requested greenhouse gas and pollutants emissions data on five facilities: Great Lakes Water Authority at Joy Road Pump Station, SOC Trail Hills Landfill, Canton Renewables LLC, which is at SOC Trail Hills Landfill, Amoresco Woodland Meadows Romulus LLC, and Advanced Engineering Company. Only SOC Trail Hills Landfill had information on greenhouse gas emissions. However, each facility except Advanced Engineering Company reported carbon monoxide emissions. This stood out to me when I first saw it. Carbon dioxide and carbon monoxide are both products of fuel combustion. The amount of either molecule produced during combustion depends on the amount of oxygen available for the combustion. Any place that produces carbon monoxide, therefore, has the potential to also produce carbon dioxide. In fact, since carbon monoxide is poisonous, I would expect these facilities to be keeping gas-burning appliances well-ventilated so as to keep carbon monoxide production minimal. My point here is that these other facilities likely have carbon dioxide emissions worth monitoring, just like SOC Trail Hills Landfill. These are the 2019 on-road and non-road greenhouse gas emissions for all of Wayne County, which I also received from my Eagle FOIA request. I suspect that Eagle doesn't have emissions data pertaining specifically to Canton Township. Each category, such as on-road diesel heavy-duty or non-road gasoline, is known as a sector. As you can see, each sector falls into one of two groups, on-road or non-road. On-road refers to any vehicle used specifically for transportation on a road. On-road refers to any vehicle used specifically for transportation on a road. Non-road refers to any vehicle, engine, or equipment that doesn't meet both of these qualifications. Passenger vehicles and delivery trucks are in the on-road sector, while airplanes, trains, tractors, and construction vehicles are in the non-road sector. These aren't comprehensive lists, though. An on-road vehicle is assigned to a sector based on its fuel type and its weight. The EPA classifies any vehicle under 8,500 pounds as light duty and any vehicle over 8,500 pounds as heavy duty. I could speculate on the meanings of these numbers for a long time, but I believe there are others who are better suited to do that speculating. The one thing I feel confident saying based on these numbers is that the on-road, non-diesel light-duty sector is the biggest sector in Wayne County. This sector includes non-diesel passenger vehicles, which leads us to the next slide. According to a UC Berkeley study, quote, "dominated by emissions from cars, trucks, and other forms of transportation, suburbs account for about 50% of all household emissions, largely carbon dioxide, in the United States," unquote. One thing this quote lacks, and that I don't recall seeing at all in the article, is that this is because life in suburbia often requires a car. I know Canton is one such suburb, because I have lived here as long as I can remember. Our residents' car dependence is also acknowledged on page 74 of the Canton Leisure Services' Five-Year Recreation Master Plan. Quote, "Most residents have little choice but to drive to reach everyday destinations, to reach offices, stores, parks, and schools. Outside of Cherry Hill Village, the land-use pattern in Canton is generally oriented to drivers," unquote. Further proving this point, SEMCOG 2020 Census Data shows that only 2.9% of households in Canton Township lack a car. Even with Canton Township being set up this way, however, we still have options to reduce our carbon footprint. Filling in sidewalk gaps will make walking from place to place safer and more appealing, thus reducing greenhouse gases from gas and diesel cars. Plus, this is already a township goal, anyway. We need public transportation. Firstly, a single bus carrying 50 people will produce fewer greenhouse gases than 50 cars carrying 50 people. Secondly, while this local government cannot force residents to switch to electric vehicles, it does have control over whether public transportation is electric or not. Keep that in mind for the next section. Thirdly, fewer vehicles on the road equals fewer vehicle accidents. Public transportation may seem like a waste of government funds, considering the fact that 97.1% of Canton Township households have cars. However, public transportation can still be greatly useful even to a household with a car. The car could be used for long-distance travel, while the bus could be used for short-distance travel, especially by people who, for whatever reason, don't drive. Last thing for this section: We need to develop alternative energy-generation programs where possible on township property. I also believe we should work with nearby cities and towns that have similar plans, especially if any of us begin producing more energy than our respective residents can use. Canton Renewables LLC is already taking landfill gases and turning them into usable energy, and DTE Energy supports individual Michiganders switching to solar. So, the potential for alternative energy is real here in Canton. Alternative energy programs will reduce our electric bills and our consumption of fossil fuels. The switch to alternative energy makes the next section even more impactful, that section being? Section 3: Moving to Electric. Moving documents from paper to electronic means less paper, which in turn means fewer trees being chopped down. Trees take carbon out of the atmosphere, meaning they can help reduce carbon footprint. Also, no vehicles are required to ship electronic documents, which further reduces carbon footprint. Creating a virtual option for conducting all business with the township will also reduce carbon footprint from transportation, as well save time that would otherwise be spent traveling to business meetings. Developing and implementing a streamlined communication strategy to residents and employees via the Internet will give residents easy access to information on how to be sustainable, making them more able to do their part. It also may increase investment in government processes. I know I become more invested in something when I feel like I understand it. Furthermore, informed and invested voters can make better decisions for themselves. Increasing transparency on public documents and creating a virtual dashboard for transparency on budget, infrastructure, public safety, and roads via the Internet has potential to increase trust in local government, thus increasing likelihood of cooperation from residents. We will need this cooperation to achieve sustainability goals. Also, informed criticism is more useful than uninformed criticism. Items related to electric vehicles are all from Ann Arbor's Climate Action Plan. Some may think that because electricity is made using fossil fuels, electric vehicles are no better than gas vehicles. However, not all electricity is made using fossil fuels. Most of it is, but since not all of it is, that means there's more potential for electric vehicles to move away from fossil fuels than there is for gas vehicles to move away from fossil fuels. Furthermore, quote, "Researchers from the universities of Cambridge, Exeter, and Nijmegen in the Netherlands found that in 95% of the world, driving an electric car is better for the environment than driving a gasoline-powered car." So, not only does it make logical sense, it also has actual research backing it up. Ensuring all new construction includes infrastructure for future technology will allow us to avoid the demolition and reparation costs involved in doing a retrofit. Not only do demolition and reparation add to monetary costs, they also take more time and waste more resources. For example, removing perfectly good cement to add conduit under it and then replace it with new cement makes less sense than adding the conduit before laying down the cement in the first place. The conduit idea for electric vehicle infrastructure is also in the Leisure Services Plan. While this local government cannot force residents to switch to electric cars, we can make electric cars more appealing to them by installing electric vehicle infrastructure, such as charging stations. Plus, we can pass electric vehicle infrastructure ordinances for businesses, like Ann Arbor did. Section 4: For the People and Teamwork. Expand Community Gardens. Firstly, local produce has a lower carbon footprint than non-local produce because it does not need to be shipped long distances by truck. Secondly, a fee to use the gardens to grow produce is a source of government income. Thirdly, gardens are good for mental health and for a healthy diet. Composting is another item from Ann Arbor's Climate Action Plan. Inedible products from the community gardens can be put back into the garden. Organic waste from grocery stores can go here, too. This reduces the amount of organic waste in landfills, meaning less groundwater-contaminating leachate and greenhouse gases from said landfills. Composting is a natural source of fertilizer. Canton soil is originally fertile on its own, so why not help it return to that state? A quote from the Sierra Club Iowa chapter, quote, "The common practice has been for a contractor to scrape the topsoil off of a building lot and then not return topsoil or return very little topsoil to the building site once construction has been completed," unquote. Long-term Canton residents have noticed this trend, according to Anne Marie Graham-Hodak and Kate Borninsky. We could also run an educational campaign to teach residents how to compost on their own safely and hygienically. The items on this slide, all from the "Welcoming Community" section of the strategic plan, are pro-equity. In my Thinking Sustainably college course, I was taught about the triple bottom line of sustainability: economics, environment, and equity. These must all be taken into account when thinking sustainably. Everyone needs to be part of our efforts, regardless of their language or place of origin. People who are made to feel welcome and comfortable will be more willing to help. Next steps: Talk to people who know how alternative energy technology works on an engineering level. Someone with this sort of knowledge would be far better equipped than myself to figure out the potential for various forms of alternative energy, as well as the financial costs of the equipment. Also, talk to people who know about sustainable agriculture. Survey residents to learn how they feel about sustainability plans. Create a sustainability committee. Consider past sustainability interns, including myself, for this position. Track progress. Adopt a sustainability plan. Keep residents invested in sustainability so they carry on sustainability efforts in their daily activities and in how they vote for government. And: Participate in the Michigan Green Communities Challenge.
Thank you very much, Sarah. That was really good. Are there any questions for Sarah? Or comments? Sonia?
Sarah, that was a really, really good presentation. It had all the information with a great sense of humor in there. So, I really liked your ideas and how much research you've done on this, and I think we can use these ideas to go forward with our sustainability plans. So, great job.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yeah, I just want to echo those sentiments. It was a perfect balance of detail, but also it was a comprehensive proposal where you were able to kind of thread the connection between all of the items, and I really appreciated this, and I think there's a lot of good usable information in here that will help us move forward with our kind of goal here. So, I am very, very impressed. Thank you very much, Sarah. Good job.
Thank you. Kate?
Hi, Sarah. I just, I wanted to mention something that you hadn't mentioned in your presentation, and that is that you are a resident of Canton. So, it was great that you chose us for your internship. Also, I have a request. I know you have a longer version of your presentation, that this was just the truncated one that you showed us tonight, so I am wondering if you could make a PDF and send your longer version to the, to the board, or you can send it to me and Anne Marie, and we can send it out to the board, because I think they might be interested in what was left out.
Sarah, do you have anything that you want to say?
I suppose I could do that, but when I moved on to the truncated one, I left the longer version behind, and I wasn't quite done with that yet, so it might be a tad bit rough.
That's fine. If you want to just send us the truncated one, I think that would be great, too, because for, we saw it this evening, but it was hard to look at, like, your sources and some of the smaller details. So, I think that the trustees would appreciate being able to look at it more in depth.
All right. Well, Sarah, thank you very, very much for your great work, and thank you also, Kate, for helping and assisting with that, and also Amy. Also, Amy helped, I see Amy Houston online. So, thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution encouraging residents to decline to sign the Secure My Vote petition.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the following resolution encouraging residents to decline to sign the Secure My Vote petition. Whereas constitutional amendments to strengthen voting rights and ballot access were submitted to and overwhelmingly approved by Michigan voters as Proposal 18-3 at the November 6, 2018 general election; whereas current state legislative efforts in Michigan put ballot access at risk for vulnerable populations and walk back many of the popular reforms that have resulted in historic turnout in Michigan elections; whereas the Secure My Vote initiative seeks to use a portion of the Michigan Constitution to enact proposed legislation without a vote of the electorate; many Michigan voters may not realize the impact of signing the petition, could potentially allow a small minority of individuals to help the Legislature pass veto-proof legislation restricting voter rights; whereas the Michigan, the Secure My Vote initiative includes some of the most restrictive portions of a 39-bill election reform package introduced earlier this year in the Michigan Legislature, including restrictions on absentee voting, stricter ID laws, and limits to volunteer support of elections; and whereas Canton Township supports equitable and easier access to the ballot box through federal and state standards around early voting, absentee voting, and voter registration, now therefore be it. Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton encourages residents to decline to sign the Secure My Vote petition. Understand that a constitutional loophole in our referendum process could result in legislative enactment rather than a ballot proposal that goes to the voters.
Support. Thank you. Supported by, heard Kate and Summer, and can I hear all in favor to vote this into our record? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. At the end, for public comment.
Question is, what comment are we going to use to educate the locals?
Yes, we can actually answer that at the end. We'll answer that at the end during Board comment.
Do you want me to ask at the end?
No, we can answer that during Board comment at the end. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board approve the Consent Calendar as presented. Item C1: Establish Board of Trustees Meeting Dates for 2022. C2: Consider Approval of 2022 Building Board of Appeals Meeting Dates. Item C3: Consider 2022 Planning Commission Meeting Dates. Item C4: Amend Planning Services and Building Inspection Service Fee Schedules for Zoning Board of Appeals Fees. Item C5: Consider Approval of an Agreement with Wayne County to Provide Winter Maintenance on 9.28 miles or 18.21 lane miles of county roads. Item C6: Authorization to Pay Bills in 2022 when no regular Board meeting is scheduled. Item C7: Consider Renewal of Civic Plus Website Hosting Services and Renewal of AudioEye Website ADA Services. C8: Consider Three-Year Agreement and Payment of Annual GIS Software Maintenance Fees to ESRI or ESRI Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated. Item C9: Consider Payment of CityView Annual Software Maintenance Fees. Item C11, I'm sorry, C10: Consider a Request to Relinquish Township-Held Donation Funds to the Canton Firefighters Charity Foundation. Is that correct?
C10.
Okay, perfect. And then, Item C11: Consider Approval of Schedule/Show Cause, to Schedule Show Cause Hearing for One Property Subject to Dangerous Building Hearing Orders.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninsky. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We move on to the General Calendar. Item G1: Consider Approval of 2021 Budget Adjustments.
Okay, allow me one moment to switch over. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the attached listing of budget adjustments to the 2021 budget.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Okay, for some reason, it's not coming up. That's not good.
You might want to reload. Your PDF crashed. Welcome to my world. The Township adopted the 2021 budget at the November 10, 2020 Board Meeting, and since then, has made various amendments to it. At this time, Anne Marie, the Supervisor, is asking the Board of Trustees to approve the attached budget adjustment to the 2021-year budget. A description of the budget adjustments is explained on the attachments.
Director Trumbull, do you want to add anything to that?
I have nothing to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, there we go. Any questions for Director Trumbull? Nope. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, G2: Consider Authorization of a Purchase Order to Own OHM Advisors for Professional Engineering Services for the 2022 Water System Improvement.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve a Purchase Order Contract for the 2022 Water Main Improvements to OHM Advisors in the amount of $102,050.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. As part of the ongoing effort to improve the public water system and provide better pressure and service, OHM Advisors and Canton Township have developed two water main projects: the addition of a new water main along Joy Road, Wester Ridge, to east, just east of Napier, and removal of six pressure-reducing valves in the system. OHM handles our water model and our water master plan, and it was retained in 2013 as the engineer for our new water storage facility, and recent meter pit upgrades that were completed in 2018. In addition, as our water modeler, OHM, will be needed for the background modeling analysis for this design. For these reasons, Engineering Services recommended retaining OHM as the design engineer for the 2022 Water System Improvements for the base bid amount $102,050. Director Smith, do you have anything to add?
I-
Hi, yes, good evening. Not sure how to handle this, but I believe we corrected this RBA. It's supposed to be $107,000, not $102,000. There's a $5,000 contingency. The RBA was updated, and I don't see that the final one made its way into the packet.
Okay, what was the amount?
$107,050.
$107,050.
It's in the actions.
The action, yeah, the action requested is correct, but the resolution was also corrected and sent in. I'm not sure what happened there.
Diane, if you're comfortable, I'll take a friendly amendment to adjust that amount to $107,000. Is the $50 still in there?
Yes.
Okay, $107,050.
I'll support.
Okay. Sorry about that, Jade.
No, no problem. And then I just wanted to say that this is part of the bigger project that we presented earlier this year in regards to the water storage analysis technical memo. We were considering the Regional Water Authority. So this is the engineering to start that process, which will result in the Township saving, estimated savings of $800,000 a year in the water sewer fund, or the water fund.
Thank you. Any Board questions or comments? Nope. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes. Item G3, consider approval to purchase a Toro aerator for Pheasant Run Golf Club.
Madam Supervisor, I'm going to do... I'm going to try to do this all in one motion, if I can get creative. I move to waive the purchasing policy for the purchase of a Toro aerator for Pheasant Run Golf Course and award the purchase of a Toro aerator from Spartan Distributor at 487 West Davidson Street, PO Box 246, in Sparta, Michigan, 49345, in the amount of $27,755.83 to be paid from the account number listed, capital, outlay, machinery, and equipment, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. While performing followation at the Pheasant Run Golf Club, staff became aware that the current aerator stopped working and is in need of replacement. For parts consistency with current equipment and based on the recommendation from Fleet Maintenance, we are recommending the purchase of a Toro aerator. Due to Spartan Distributors being the sole authorized provider of Toro equipment within this designated area, Canton Leisure Services is recommending to waive the purchase policy and award the purchase of a Toro aerator to Spartan distributors at a cost of $27,755.83 to be paid from listed account, capital, outlay, machinery, and equipment. Based on our relationship with Indigo Golf, Canton is able to purchase the aerator at the national pricing plan, which is a better price than the state bid price. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
No, nothing further to add at this time, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes. Item G4, consider approval of contract with Ace Pyro LLC.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the Board to waive the bidding process, or bidding policy, and approve a five-year contract with Ace Pyro LLC at 13001 East Austin Road, Manchester, Michigan, 48158, pending approval of the final contractual language by the Township attorney.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Thank you. In September of 2021, the fireworks display held in Heritage Park was a carryover from 2020 and 2021, when Liberty Fest was unable to be held. This also marked the final year of the existing five-year contract with Canton's fireworks provider, Ace Pyro LLC. Ace was extremely flexible and worked with the Township during the Liberty Fest cancellations. And although contractually, they had the option to charge a cancellation fee, they did not, and went out of their way to accommodate our September show. Based on the recommendation from the Canton Fire Department staff regarding Ace Pyro's exemplary service, superior attention to detail, and most importantly, their safety record, Leisure Services is recommending waiving the purchasing policy and approve a new contract with Ace Pyro LLC. Leisure Services is recommending approving a new five-year contract not to exceed $30,000 in years one and two of the contract, which is 2022, 2023. $32,000 in years three through five, 2024 through 26, and an auto renewal option to extend the agreement for two additional years of $34,027 through 28. The contract will also have an annual opt-out option, where the Township should be no longer be satisfied with their service. Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, just that Ace has been extremely easy to work with for, most importantly, our fire department when handling all the safety issues that they deal with for fireworks. Very flexible with us on the cancellations of Liberty Fest due to the COVID crisis. And I would say that their accommodation of the September show date for us was very challenging for them. They had already prior commitments elsewhere. Were able to bring in, they actually used their primary staff at our display because they value our display so much, and brought in additional outside individuals to operate the show at their prior commitment. So they've been fantastic to work with. And comparing fireworks companies is very challenging, and it comes down to primarily safety in our working relationship with them.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Kate?
Hi, Greg. Just wondering, how long was the last contract we had with them? Was that also five years?
Five-year contract.
Okay, thank you.
Your comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Next item, G6, consider approving the purchase of a one-year service agreement for the Motorola radio and dispatch console equipment.
Let me do G5.
Oh, okay, sure, we can do that. G5, consider extending the temporary wage increase for part-time seasonal and variable employees.
I'll try to do this in one motion. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve extending the $2.5 per hour wage incentive for all current and new hire leisure services and facilities maintenance positions in levels A through nine on the part-time seasonal variable wage scale through March 31, 2022, and to approve extending the referral incentive to any current Canton Township employee who recruits a part-time seasonal variable employee in position levels A through nine on the part-time wage scale through March 11, 2022, to receive $100 per employee. To qualify for this incentive, the applicant must write the referring... Write the referring employee's name on their application when they apply, and work 250 hours within the first six months.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Foster. Thank you. Canton Township is heavily reliant on part-time employees. These individuals make up a dedicated workforce who contributes significantly to the overall operations and are essential for the facilitation of programs and services, as well as the care and maintenance of Township facilities, parks, and spaces. Canton Leisure Services typically employs as many as 350 part-time and seasonal employees during the summer, making up 85% of the department staffing, as well as contributing an average of 200,000 hours of labor annually. As has been well documented, the region, state, and nation continue to experience a significant shortage of workforce. Canton Township has not been immune to this shortage and continues to experience significant difficulties recruiting and hiring new employees, as well as retaining the current workforce, resulting in reduced service levels and modified offerings to residents. To address this significant challenge, Leisure Services is proposing extending the wage incentive of $2.50 per hour to support current part-time employees, as well as to recruit additional support to fill vacancies. The current wage incentive will expire December 31, 2021. We are proposing extending this incentive through March 31, 2022. This timeframe will allow the Township to continue to evaluate the program and investigate all options for recruitment and retention. Prior to the conclusion of this incentive, we will work towards a new compensation package for part-time employees. This program will continue to be available for all leisure services and facilities maintenance positions in levels A through nine on the part-time seasonal variable wage scale, and will not include interns. Additionally, we are recommending extending the referral incentive to any current Canton Township employee who recruits a part-time seasonal variable employee to receive $100 per employee. To qualify for this incentive, the applicant must write the referring employee's name on their application when they apply, and work 250 hours within the first six months.
Director Homberger, do you want to add anything?
I think that covers the most of it. We're just still really struggling to fill positions at all of our facilities and for recreation programs. It's become probably our number-one challenge that we're faced with right now. And we're already facing facility and program modifications. And hopefully, this extension will allow us to continue to operate as much as possible and recruit, retain our current employees. And then we can hopefully use this next couple of months to evaluate a package, evaluate what's going on regionally and nationally, to come up with something to help us recruit more employees, especially coming into the summer season. We'll certainly need to hire a significant amount in the early spring.
Any comments or questions? Stephen?
Thank you, Director Homberger. And we discussed this a bit in our study session last week. And I would just ask that you report back to us. And it could be via email, but before the March 31 cutoff, just to let us know if, you know, how many new people we've been able to hire, and if it's working or not, yeah.
Certainly. We're also planning, by the end of the week, to put a survey out to all of our current and seasonal employees to kind of see what would help as well, so that we can get their opinions.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I am grateful that this was brought forward, and I hope it does pass. And the primary reason is, one, our current, so one, our current wage scale is overly complex for part-time employees. So I'm excited that there will be some reform of that process. But two, bringing our wages in line with private industry is going to be very helpful, because it does feel like we have grown out of step. So this is a good temporary fix, and will hopefully allow us to solve or stem the bleeding on some of the temporary employee hiring issues that we have. But more importantly, I think it's an opportunity for us to move in the direction of a board goal as well when it comes to equitably compensating people for the work that they perform on behalf of the Township residents.
Summer?
I want to echo what Trustee Snyderman and Clerk Segras said. I am glad that we're doing this. I do have a question. And I apologize, I did not catch it in the Board packet earlier, but why are we not including interns?
That wasn't included in the last one.
Yeah.
And was, I think that came as, I can't remember the origin of that one.
Okay. I mean, I am generally supportive of this. I just think in the future, we should take a look at making sure to compensate interns equitably. I know that there's a big movement now to make sure people are paying their interns and that they are fairly compensated for their work.
Michael?
The intern position that is on a later agenda item averages out to $20 an hour, just so you would know. That would, they would exempt them from this incentive.
Great. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Thank you. Item, motion passes. Item G6, thank you. Consider approving the purchase of a one-year service agreement for the Motorola radio and dispatch console equipment.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the 2022 purchase of a Motorola Solutions one-year service agreement for the Motorola radio and dispatch console equipment in the amount of $33,568.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninski. Thank you. The Public Safety Department is requesting to purchase a one-year service agreement with Motorola Solutions for coverage of the 800 megahertz Motorola dispatch radio and E911 console components for 2022 in the amount of $33,568. The new agreement needs to be in place prior to January 1st to maintain seamless coverage going into 2022. Chief Chad, do you want to add to anything?
Not at this time.
Great. Any discussions or questions by the Board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes. Item G7, consider approval of security items and installation for Clerk's office.
I got a dog in this fight, but, Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of security-related items from Interstate Security, not to exceed $20,000, and to amend the election budget as indicated below.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Thank you. The Clerk's Office engaged the Department of Homeland Security and the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency in a site visit to determine the needs of the organization and to protect the critical infrastructure of elections. On August 11, 2021, the agency conducted physical site review analysis and directed confidential recommendations for upgrades to facilities and processes. This coupled with the desire to meet the U.S. Election Assistance Commission Best Practice document, Chain of Custody, and the U.S. Department of Justice's Federal Constraints and Post-Election Audits report. Both were issued this year. The Clerk's Office has determined that additional security measures are required to meet the minimum standards of federal law and state rules. As a result, the proposed purchase of new keycard scans, cameras, and ballot-sensitive areas, and wireless door open buttons are required. Clerk Segras, do you want to add anything to that?
I just would like to point out that we, that 100% of these costs are included inside the existing budget. We definitely had to get creative to get the money. We scrimmed from like four, four funds to get the money to pay for the $19,000 or $20,000 of upgrades for Interstate. But I would greatly appreciate this, you know, the increase in security. And this is, for most, you know, for your information, the retention of all ballots. We have a six-year retention on applications to vote, and we have a 18, or a 28-month retention on federal election ballots. So even after an election, we keep those ballots and those applications to vote for a couple of years. Additionally, we also keep our tabulators and election equipment. And this would just allow us, the security, to have it sequestered in a way that meets the federal requirements of law, to maintain sole custody. So no fund balance is being requested in this purchase.
Thank you. Any Board discussion questions? Stephen?
Thank you, Clerk Segras, and I'm all for it. I just was wondering if these actions catch us up to what other Clerk's offices have in terms of security? Or are we now leading edge compared to others in Wayne County?
I would be very satisfied with these. I think one of the benefits would be the surveillance cameras, both inside and outside of the retention area. My assumption is we will be leading, because the Chain of Custody document is brand-new. And so things in the past, like an individual going into a restricted area, we're kind of extending the same rules that apply to police evidence to election equipment. So a log would need to be signed for the time that you enter in, the time that you leave. It would be documented by a security camera. Your badge would be indicating when you go there. And this is really a result of the increased, and I would say, the unnecessary scrutiny around election administration over the last year and a half. But I am unaware of anybody in Wayne County, and I am unaware of any jurisdictions in Michigan that meet the existing standards. And so I'm very excited that we were able to do so in our existing budget.
Great. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes. Item G8, consider approval for the creation of a temporary redistricting auditor position and permanent clerk III position in the Clerk's office.
Madam Supervi, which one was this?
G8.
Oh, all right, I'm on G9, sorry. I'm so excited for this one. Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the creation of a temporary redistricting auditor position and permanent clerk III position in the Clerk's office, and to amend the 2022 Clerk's budget as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Borninski. Thank you. Since 2001, local election officials have struggled across the nation to meet the ever-changing demands and increased scrutiny placed on the election process. Smaller jurisdictions have often failed to implement efficient reforms or methods required to adapt to the changing environment. Given the increase in outside interference in the 2016 election, the subsequent determination by the Secretary of Homeland Security in 2017 that elections are critical infrastructure, the reforms to Michigan election law voted in at the ballot in 2018, and finally, the tumultuous pandemic... and finally, the tumultuous pandemic elections of 2020 with the post-election controversy that has extended into today, the role of the Elections Division in the clerk's office requires additional assistance. In 2020, the clerk's office benefited from the loaning of employees from outside departments to help meet the increased demands. This included five FTEs and two continuing part-time employees, along with 450 hours from a staffing company. In order to process ballots for distribution, the clerk's office relied on the assistance of over 40 volunteers for a week straight. These resources were temporary in nature and not adequate for long-term professional stability. The clerk's office followed the recommendation of Raftalas in benchmarking communities and quantifying the required staffing needs to meet the demand. After examining other communities who themselves appear understaffed and ill-equipped to meet the long-term professional demands, it was determined that Canton required additional full-time assistance. The first step in the proposal was to upgrade an existing part-time position to full-time in order to prepare for the 2022 election season. Additionally, a temporary intern position is requested to help perform the required maintenance to the voter precincts in Canton Township and align them to best suit voter preference and future housing development. Clerk Seigras, I think you have that.
Thank you. And that was a very exhaustive explanation. And so I'm going to be much more muted than I am traditionally known for and more abbreviated than I normally am. One thing I wanted to do is draw everyone's attention to the Canton Redistricting Project proposal that was in the board packet. This spells out specifically what we're doing as you, so a description of the work required by the redistricting auditor, which is the temporary position, which would act as an internship, to implement a centralized polling place model for Canton Township and realign precinct boundaries to accommodate the impact of voter preference and proposal 18-3. And ultimately, this is a response to my office drastically trying to meet the ever-changing needs of the elections process, right? Moving from a precinct to a central polling place model, this is essentially the job description that we have here for the precinct auditor. There's some information there. This is extremely advanced work that would be conducted by more than likely a graduate student, which is part of the reason why we are paying the amount of money that I'm recommending we pay. And the work that they're doing is extremely complex. I did about half this work in 2017, and it took me about three months to accomplish it. I'm hoping somebody with more experience than myself and more technological acumen and with the assistance of our GIS specialists will be able to accomplish this in two to three months as well. A couple of things that we're going to have them do is handle this little graph right here, which you can see in two of my proposals today. And this is information from the MIT Election Data and Science Lab, which shows changing in voter behaviors. This is extremely small, and so I won't go too much in detail. But suffice to say, the blue line here is voting in person on Election Day. And that is at 90% in the year 1996. Over the last 25 years, that number has decreased. To the 2020 election, where it appears as though 28% of voters voted in-person on Election Day. And this is our national numbers. 40% voted a mail ballot, and then around 25% nationally voted early. As you are all well aware, at this point, Michigan does not have early voting. And so we saw all of that early voting number added to the voting by mail number because Canton Township had 72% of ballots cast on Election Day in November of 2020 as mail absentee ballots. In the August primary, 75% of ballots cast were ballots by mail. And those are the national trends. Here's some information on the Michigan trend here about increases in voting by mail. And here is the information in Canton. And it's, I have better data visualizations in my other proposal about all of this information. I've got some beautiful information here from some academic research about how elections have changed over this period of time. And this document I'm showing you is intended to be the starting place for this individual. Once we hire them, we will give them this document, and I will sit with them and we will go over kind of how to factor in all of the changes. The township has 75,000 registered voters that are currently divided into 40 precincts. Our, the average is 1,800 voters per precinct. And traditionally, I have wanted no more than 1,100 anticipated voters in a precinct on Election Day. These assumptions moving forward are challenged because we have seen voter behavior change. Michigan election law is fairly clear about what the requirements are per precinct. Our goal, given voter behavior, is to increase the targeted voters per precinct to 2,500, which would allow us to drop from 40 precincts to 30 precincts. Now, there would be a substantial payroll savings here. I spend about $1,600 per precinct to administer per election. In 2020, we administered three elections. Eliminating 10 precincts would save me $16,000 per election. That would be $32,000 for two elections this year, if we are able to see a decrease in 10 precincts. Keep that in mind when I ask you for money in a little bit. I want them to factor in Wayne Westland School District because those boundaries can't be crossed. And I want them to factor in the Van Buren School District because those boundaries can't be crossed. Of Michigan's, of Canton's 40 precincts, 34 of them are in the Plymouth-Canton School Districts. I want them to factor in, or ignore rather, the current redistricting process, with the exception for purposes of the county. For any of you who haven't seen District 10, this is what was approved by the Wayne County Commission. This is our new district. We used to be Canton and all of Plymouth Township and the city of Plymouth. But guess what? In the last 10 years, we've been very busy building houses. And so we are now all of Canton and a few precincts in Plymouth Township. But not many anymore. Additionally, we need to factor in the Michigan Independent Citizens redistricting work that is not going to be completed until two more weeks from today. Luckily, the congressional district is the same in all proposed maps. The state senate district is the same in all proposed maps. And it's entirely contiguous, which means all of Canton is in one district. The only difference is the state house map. Lovely, beautifully enough, and I think it's because the chair of the Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission is from Canton and knows our community well. Three precincts are included in a separate state representative district. But they are respecting the school district lines. So it's just the three Wayne Westlands precincts that are currently included in the state house seat to our east, which would be predominantly Westland. So we don't have to concern ourselves with anything from the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. They're not messing with any of our issues when it comes to precincts. We are going to lose a split precinct, which is fantastic, and that's going to save us money on ballot style when it comes to programming the election. Not a substantial amount, but it will save us some money and some time. We're going to go from 41 ballot styles to 40 ballot styles. And it will go from 82 ballot styles for the primary to 80 ballot styles. That's a term of art that I could explain, but I'm already going on too long. There's some information there. On the deadline, after a decennial census, the deadline is April 4. So that's our drop dead date for having these maps to the state of Michigan, which means the clock is ticking. Here's some information on how to draw precinct boundaries. This is all copied and pasted from statute. So I've done a substantial amount of research already for the person who will be taking this job. But there's a lot of information here to unpack. The final element I'm going to ask them to do is to not think about Canton today, but to think about Canton at the time of the 2024 election, when we will have over 80% turnout, and we will have probably 3,000 to 4,000 more registered voters, maybe less. Because we have right here a beautiful map, whoops, called the Approved Projects. This is all of the stuff that has been approved by the Planning Commission or the Township Board, but has not yet been built. And there's a running list of all the development with how many units. And I'm going to ask this individual to sit down with our planning official and factor in, based on the type of development, is it detached condominiums, likely to be senior housing populations, and therefore have one to have two registered voters per unit? Is it single-family household and likely to have three registered voters per unit? Is it an apartment complex, likely to have 2.5 registered voters per unit? And they're going to project how much is going to be delivered by the 2024 election. And we're also going to look at how much will be delivered within the next 10 years. So there's a lot of moving parts here. There's a select group of individuals who will be qualified to do this work and who would be interested in doing this work. But there's some really amazing work going out there. And I've got information here with a tool from the University of Southern California Center for Inclusive Democracy that has a lot of census information. And because I want them, when picking voting locations, to factor in senior citizens, individuals without a vehicle, individuals who don't have access to transportation, trying to make sure we don't make it more difficult for people to vote by trying to make it more efficient for people to vote. We're going to prioritize and factor the voting experience and make sure we don't increase any barriers to the voting box, to the ballot box. So that's that project. And my final modernization study is a long presentation. And so I'm going to make sure I burn through it very quickly because the supervisor so eloquently did a really good job of reading the summary that I wrote. Here are three of the board goals that I believe this factors into place. Welcoming community quality, infrastructure, and organizational climate and culture. And the primary reason is for welcoming community, all township residents need to be able to fully and effectively access services. And I am concerned about the election demand and our ability to provide absentee mail ballots for voters within enough time for them to legally vote them and to minimize disruption based on the U.S. Postal Service. Additionally, quality infrastructure. We want to be adaptive, responsive, and always relevant. And if we can't get election work done for the voters, we are not adaptive, responsive, or relevant. And then from an organizational climate and culture, if you've ever worked in an election in the clerk's office, you understand what it feels like to be beaten like a rented mule. It's not fun, it's very challenging. And a good example is the clerk in leaving the county in 2016. The former clerk Terry Bennett was involved in a vehicle crash because she had been working for 36 hours straight, which is an unreasonable amount to ask of a human being to do that kind of work. Raftalas gave us a task. They said, "Look at some information. Don't just tell us what you want, find the data to prove it." And they asked us to benchmark other communities. It's not just us. The Presidential Commission on Election Administration came through and essentially said, "There is a deficit in the country of professional election administrators. For 230 years, we have required elections be administered like a Norman Rockwell painting, where citizens will walk to the nearest government building and cast a ballot in a beautiful wooden box, and somebody they know will look them in the eyes and hand them their ballot, and they will put that in, and everyone will thank the clerk at the end of the day for voting." And it's a beautiful process. But times have changed. People don't know their neighbors, there's a lot more people, there's a lot more suspicion in the process. And believe it or not, clerks are not the same loved human beings they used to be because Norman Rockwell is not the same picture of election administration anymore. The U.S. Election Assistance Commission has a beautiful diagram of what is, they call administrator competencies. Notice everything in that marine blue, that's only the election itself. Now, back in 1996, when 90% of your electorate was voting on Election Day, that would have been a larger chunk of what the duties of an election administrator are. Notice that is less than 25% of the job of running an election. The light green is election preparation, and that occurs 75 days up to an election. Keep in mind, in 2020, we administered three elections. That means there were 225 days where we were doing the aquamarine and we were doing the light green. But on top of that, everything in purple, which is about 35% of our job, occurs every day of every single year. Even when we don't have an election, we're working on elections. And the Democracy Fund is just essentially saying here, it's more difficult to run elections now than ever before because of what's called the voting wars. Voting rights activists like Summer Foster over here are trying to make our jobs more difficult because they want to make it easier for people to vote. And I appreciate that. But some of those people on the other end of the spectrum, those people who claim that they want integrity, are making our job more challenging because they're suspiciously watching us, assuming that we're doing all types of horrible things that we're not doing. We're caught in the middle. In response to the 2016 election and foreign interference in voter registration rules, the Department of Homeland Security labeled elections "critical infrastructure." This is in line with dams, nuclear power facilities, water treatment centers, elections. This is critical infrastructure, according to the Department of Homeland Security. Here's some information about Promote the Vote or Proposal 18-3 that drastically changed our job. The two key functions that changed, that revolutionized my job, was same-day voter registration and no-excuse absentee voting. And these two things weren't revolutionary in other states. No-excuse absentee had been in 27 states plus the District of Columbia. And no-excuse and same-day voter registration was in 18 states and DC at the time. There's that beautiful graph about the change in voting behavior that was trending prior to the election. Here's some information. MIT and Stanford put out a 400-page document. It's my favorite document ever created in history. It is called "The Virus in the Vote," which is the most catchy title I've ever heard. And they analyze all 50 states. And they applaud Michigan for being uniquely qualified for the 2020 election because of Promote the Vote. We had practiced implementing all of the things we needed to do to protect people during the COVID-19 pandemic. This is what has changed since I was elected clerk. The number of voters on the automatic application list, which we call the Permanent AV List, grew by 426% from 8,200 to 35,000 people. Here's a beautiful graph, three graphs. I broke them down. The first one on the left is how people voted before 18-3. 31% voted absentee, that's that light green. After 18-3, in March, they switched. 68% voted absentee. And this is before Michigan registered its first COVID case. We were all babies back then. In August, after we had experienced a boom, people had been sent home for seven weeks here at the township. People were put on layoff, everyone started masking. We lost most of our precinct inspectors because they did not want to put themselves in harm's way. And a majority of them are from the Greatest Generation, which is a demographic that is uniquely challenged by COVID-19 at the time. We saw 75% of the voters vote an absentee ballot. The clerk's office processed 2.9x the amount of AV mail ballots in November of 2016. Terry Bennett counted 14,220 ballots. Michael Seigras counted 41,416 AV ballots. This is a very text-heavy page. I'm going to skip that. The concern. The absentee process doesn't just mean I have to do 35,000 more ballots than Terry Bennett did. I have to apply this eight-step process 35,000 times. Mail a ballot, mail an application, check a signature. Mail a ba, assemble a ballot, mail a ballot, check a signature. Receive a ballot and secure it. Balance the list of voters to the list of ballots. But. In March. The week before the primary. Three candidates dropped out of the Democratic primary. And all the Kamala Harris voters and the Pete Buttigieg voters came to my office and said, I want my ballot back. Cancel my ballot. I want to vote for somebody else in the primary. So now we have to go, we have to retrieve the ballot, spoil the ballot, issue them a new ballot. Verify that signature. And then store it legally in our new, hopefully, secure storage facility down in the basement. And then tabulate that on election day. If the three elections in 2020 meant that we processed 75,272 total AV ballots. In 2016, Terry Bennett only processed 25,862 ballots. That's 50,000 additional ballots in a one-year period. When you apply the eight-step process, this is assuming no spoiled ballots. That's 39, 395,000 additional administrative tasks to run an election in a presidential year. 400,000 additional administrative tasks. Many of these tasks take multiple minutes. It's over 150 days just for absentee ballots. On top of the work that we do in the clerk's office every single year. Here's a timeline of what we do to administer one specific election. March, August and November. 75 days out, we have to mail an application. 75 to 45 days, we are checking those signatures when we receive them. And we verify those signatures if you've paid attention to the news. We find people who sign other people's names. And we notify law enforcement. 45 days out, we're making sure that everybody who's a military voter and overseas voter is getting their ballot. 40 days from, from the date of election, we are mailing our bulk list. And that's the one that scares me. Between the 40-day window, we are doing steps one through seven for the remaining 20% of voters who did not return their application for an absentee ballot prior to that 40-day window. And then 14 days before an election and up to election day, we are registering voters. And implementing steps one through seven. On election day, we are implementing step eight. The concern about missing that and not having the appropriate resource is that we would be violating the law. We would see decreased customer service and we would have voter disenfranchisement potential due to US Postal Service delivery case. Benchmarking. We chose five communities. And the reason I chose these five communities is because these are rock star communities with amazing, amazing administrators and a professional staff who deliver awesome service to their residents. Lansing, Grand Rapids, Ann Arbor, Macomb Township, Warren and Canton. And the benchmarking is for election purposes only. We pulled out anybody who did not work elections. So in Macomb Township, for example. Finance is under the clerk and they have four FTE that do financial services. They are not included. So in Macomb Township, the clerk is responsible for overseeing 11 employees. Not the seven on this list. Of the five communities identified as benchmarks, Canton serves a registered voter universe of just more than the smallest jurisdiction, which is Macomb Township. Of those same five communities, Canton issued more mail-in ballots than three communities. We are just behind Grand Rapids. And Ann Arbor, but we're chasing them. Of the five communities identified as benchmarks, Canton has a smaller staff size than all of them. Ann Arbor hires 20 temporary staff workers to help administer the elections. That would cost us $75,000 a month if we were to go with that model. So Ann Arbor's numbers there in the middle are a little deceptive. Of the top five communities identified as benchmarks, Canton has more absentee ballots processed for each staff member than all other communities excepting Ann Arbor. But I didn't factor in those 20 people processing those ballots. If you were to do that, I guarantee you Canton Township would be processing more absentee ballots than any other community. That's including Grand Rapids, which is twice our size. That's a lot of work to do those 395,000 administrative tasks that my office was able to accomplish. Canton has less resources allocated to the retention and recruitment of professional personnel. Ann Arbor, in this instance, has two deputy clerks. Canton has one. How did we do that in 2020? Am I Harry Potter? No, I'm not Harry Potter. I wasn't able to use a magic wand. Luckily, we had a substantial, we had, we had, we had five individuals donated to us from departments who were closed because of the pandemic. We had two. Part-time employees because the township had put part-time employees, CPTs on layoff for months. We had two who were willing to work in our department. We had 450 hours from contractors that was paid for by a grant from an outside entity, not from the Canton taxpayers. And we had 40 volunteers package ballots over a one-week period. We used an army to get this done. The problem is. That's an army that's not available this year. When you factor in the value, five full-time employees for six months is a value of $167,000. Not available. Two CPTs for six months is $20,000, not available. And that $48,000 grant from the Center for Technology and Civic Life is also not available. Thank you for the, the resolution about the declining to sign that petition. Because one of the things they want to do is make it illegal for us to receive grant funding for the purposes of administering elections. So I wouldn't have been able to use that money to count, to process those ballots and issue those ballots. I don't know how we would have done that without raising taxes for the taxpayers. And I don't think that the legislators who are pushing for this ballot proposal understand it's a, it's a hidden tax increase for the residents of Canton Township and all residents of the state of Michigan. And could potentially violate identity theft issues for senior citizens. But. Some people have 2020 election derangement syndrome and have a hard time thinking linearly and with quality. The 2022 budgeted staffing levels currently are. Everything we've got right there. Plus 200 budgeted hours for contractors and a staffing company. What's important to note is that half CPT. Back when 90% of the people were voting in the polls, that used to be a full-time position, but that was eliminated in 2012. Eliminating a petition, a position in 2012 is going to be very relevant in a few slides when we talk about how the township stopped doing passports in 2012 because the clerk's office didn't have the administrative support to continue to issue passports. They were overwhelmed by the election demand in 2012 and they discontinued doing passports. That was the same year we lost an FTE. My proposal is to upgrade that position. To clerk three position. Now, this is woefully insufficient to meet our demand, but it's more than we can do. It's more than we're currently doing. I don't know how that got in there. Oh, I went the wrong way. I would propose that we go back to using passports. We have currently submitted an application. To start doing passports again. We would be budgeting $20,000 in revenue for six months of passports. One thing we didn't do in the past was offer photo services, which you can charge $8 for per photo. You could see a substantial increase in this revenue that we didn't do in 2012. And that's why Delta Township was able to report that they received $70,000 in income. There's more competition around Canton. And we don't know for certain that we're going to be approved for doing passports. But I can assure you, many residents would like to see the township continue to do passports in the future. It's a great service. It's relevant to the taxpayers. Phase two proposal is that we create a full-time records manager position. MCL 4165 says the township clerk shall have custody of all records. MCL 69 says I have to safely keep those records. And that's a very important. It's very important because the courts have been very clear that that role to safe, safely keep the records. That that section of law, MCL 4169, supplants every other section of law with regard to record keeping. And then there's the criminal penalties under the penal code, MCL 75492. The person having custody of the documents, well, that's me. Has criminal liability. It's a misdemeanor punishable of one year. Or a fine of $1,000 if we fail to allow individuals to review township records. There's another penal code right below it, MCL 75491. Disposing of a government record outside of a retention schedule is a misdemeanor punishable by one year in prison. Luckily, that one doesn't just extend to me. That would extend to whoever disposes of the record. The problem is, is that we have a decentralized records retention process in Canton Township. There are individuals who are tasked with keeping records who are not trained in the disposal of records. They are not trained in the retention of records. They're not trained in Freedom of Information Act. And they are not trained in the importance of showing a record when a resident requests it. That's a lot of criminal liability for poor government officials inside of our organization. And then there's McKinney Green Oak Township Board. Where the Court of Appeals for the State of Michigan said, a clerk without custody or control of township papers can hardly fulfill their duty, and they say her duty. And I love that because this was 1983 at a time when most legal opinions used masculine pronouns when they issued legal edicts. And by them choosing a female pronoun, it was, it's fantastic and very progressive. Their duty of safekeeping those records. And then there's the beautiful FOIA, MCL 15. I'm sure you all know these MCLs by heart. MCL 15233 subsection 3. A person has a right to inspect copy or receive copies of the requested public record of the public body. And then there's MCL 39981812. Records are required to be kept by public officers in the discharge of their duties. That's all of us. Is the property of the state of Michigan. And shall be, shall not be disposed of, mutilated or destroyed, except as provided for by law. And what's hard is a lot of us forget that everything we work with is the property of the state of Michigan. And by proxy, the property of the residents of the state of Michigan. Every document. Including the notepads I keep notes on. Unfortunately, people don't know that and we have to educate them. MCL 18, and there's a whole range there. And this is the, this is a beautiful section of law. Authorizes a records management program responsible for establishing retention and disposal schedules. So all the general schedules that are housed by the Department of Technology Management and Budget are authorized under this section of law. So what's my concern? The clerk has unique authority and personal criminal liability for the availability and retention of public records. However, and the FOIA coordinator position, which is the deputy clerk. Has unique civil liability for the township for improper retention and availability of records. And it is not uncommon for jurisdictions to be sued under FOIA. It's happened a couple of times. The township has no centralized record retention program, period. The clerk's office has no existing oversight over the filing of records, period. The clerk's office has no existing oversight over the retention of records, period. The township has no centralized FOIA oversight program, only coordination, period. The clerk's office has no existing oversight over the disposal of records, period. The clerk's office does not currently have physical access to township records, period. But don't just take my word for it. Who am I? I'm just the custodian of records who was elected by the public. Let's take the Department of Technology Management and Budget, whose job it was, under that MCL I talked about earlier, to create that retention and disposal. The following are the concerns that they have for systems just like Canton Townships, where it's decentralized and there is no custodian who is overseeing the entire process. First concern, retrieval. Individuals must look multiple places to find records and may miss some. Volume. Employees hoard nonessential documents, drafts and duplicates. And duplicates is the number one offender. The DTMB indicates that 70% of all paper in a township or city is extra and not a public record and should not be held. 70% of the paper in this, in this building should have been shredded. But it's not. Because we don't follow a centralized records program. Turnover. Supervisors, not the township supervisor, but supervisors of employees lack time to review individual files maintained by departing employees. Onboarding. Training new employees is challenging if institutional knowledge and records are lost. There's some unique examples of that happening in this township. Security. Confidential or sensitive records may not be secured securely stored. Legal liability. Increased volume of records requiring review or release under FOIA or litigation because of inconsistent record keeping. Disaster mitigation. Vital records are not identified or protected. And customer services, the final, and I would argue the most important of all of them. Inconsistent application of procedures. Why can a township resident get a document from the Canton Township clerk in five minutes for free? But go to another department and be forced to fill out a paper, a form, potentially have to pay a fee to get that document and be required to wait for multiple weeks? You should have a consistent procedure for all people, for every request. It should be centered around the request of the individual. So what is my proposal? Clerk's office is looking for an indication. The board is comfortable presenting an additional merit position to the Merit Commission for recommendation and approval with a draft job description and factor analysis to ensure the township meets the recommendation of the Department of Technology Management and Budget. I don't understand what I did there. Increased a centralized and shared filing system. I don't, it made sense in my time, in my mind at the time. The clerk is shielded from, oh, I think I just, it's supposed to be increased centralized sharing filing system. The clerk is shielded from individual liability criminally. And the township is not placed in a position to settle further FOIA litigation. The cost estimated for this phase is based on the merit system salary structure for grades five through seven, which is my estimated grading of a position of this character. Which with salary and fringe benefits factored in would be between $78,000 and $89,700. That is my final recommendation. And that's what I feel like is required to allow the clerk's office to meet the legal requirements as set forth in the Michigan election law. The General Township Act and the Charter Township Act.
Thank you. Very thorough. Any, we have one. Any questions that Diane?
Wow. A lot of information. A lot of information. Appreciate it. I know that was a lot of work. Could you do a favor? And I know, I assume you've sent this to all of the board members to look over and, because it is a lot of information.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's even possible to put that PowerPoint on your website just for residents to be able to.
I would convert it to a PDF so that the file size would be a lot smaller. But I would do that.
Just for residents who'd like to take a look at it as well, because there's a lot of information there. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Questions or comments? I know we did receive this via email, Summer.
I hesitate to ask a question and I'm really glad you did the condensed version of your presentation. But going, going back to the beginning, when you talked about redistricting and redoing the precinct lines. Just to think through, and you don't have to answer this now, you can think about it some because it's kind of a complex question, but how you are going to educate residents and voters about the changes potentially in their. to educate residents and voters about the changes potentially in their, their state house districts, state senate districts, and in their precincts.
Thank you. I imagine we will be instituting a substantial amount of time and energy towards trying to educate the voters on what it means. And for most people, it probably won't result in a change to their voting location. It might, but it might not. And we successfully administered a similar process in 2017 with minimal disruption, but we had to be very intentional. And we did find that the impact was not universal. So areas where you tended to see individuals who voted in high density by absentee, they didn't really seem to care because many of them didn't know that they, where they voted. A great example would be precinct 33. And precinct 33, which I used to be a resident of, is the highest absentee voting precinct. They voted Dodson School, but it is not one of the busiest precincts because the majority of individuals vote in absentee ballot in precinct three, 33. So for them, changing their precinct number or changing their location would be inconsequential because a majority of them don't ever vote in person. But good points. I'll have to think about that and be very thoughtful and intentional.
Oh, thank you, and your presentation was great. I'm just giving you a hard time.
I love it.
Stephen.
First, a complaint that trustee Foster asked something that sent the clerk back to the beginning of his presentation, and I would request that that never happen again. But I would like to make two comments. One is to follow on what trustee Foster said is that, Michael, if you could also add in as a factor for the intern to look at during the redistricting, whether or not the, the resident was moved in 2017? And whether, not an overriding factor to keep them from being moved again, but just an awareness of if they are going to be moved again within four years of the last time that we did this. If it has to happen, it has to happen, but just understanding that. And then the second thing is on your final presentation, are you looking for some kind of input right now as to whether or not we're in favor of doing the, the further security and document retention stuff that you proposed? Because if you are, it was very convincing, and obviously anything that has legal implications is important to me, as I'm sure it's important to the rest of the board.
I appreciate being shielded from going to jail, most definitely. It's only a year. As long as the year is 2024, I would be very comfortable being incarcerated for an entire year.
Nope.
But then you would have to appoint a temporary clerk to administer the election while I was in jail. No, good points. I think one of the things we talked about, because we had an entire study session last week with, with extra funding requests, and while I do believe there's some statutory reasons that, I mean, well, one, this is my job. And so I will be moving forward in 2022 with a centralized records program because now that I'm aware of the penal code, I'm uncomfortable with the personal liability I have and not kind of taming the dragon or slaying the dragon that is all of the documents in Canton Township. My only concern would be if the funds aren't appropriated, that I would not be able to work the election because this isn't a full-time job. And I already made the case for why the elections are completely understaffed. But that said, I will be moving forward with a record management program. And so I think it's very important. But I do think because we, the board in January will be reviewing us a series of requests for, for, for non-budgeted funding, I would be comfortable with potentially going into that meeting with a draft job description of a records manager for phase two. Maybe seeing if Human Resources could factor it by that time. If they're overwhelmed, and I imagine they, I mean, they're busy, we're all busy, we've been doing a lot of change, I'm comfortable waiting a little bit. And then what I would want to see is that position go to the Merit Commission. Because we tend to have a process for creating new positions, and it's a little weird that it goes director, Merit Commission, then board for approval, and we kind of changed that with the last three positions we created. But that also created a little bit of confusion organizationally because we approved positions prior to being factored by Human Resources and prior to being approved by the Merit Commission. And so there's a little chicken to the egg situation there. I would love to get that groundwork kind of done, but maybe have the go-no-go in January around the time we're thinking about funding board goals, funding administrative goals, funding director requests, and if like the Treasury had any requests, or, and I know the supervisor submitted a request for, for legal support, for outside support for communications, and there was a third request there too. Because this isn't my only thing, I'm also trying to get a quarter of a million dollar machine, but I don't want to go to you guys for that. I'm trying to get that money from either the state, the county, or from CTCL before the state legislature passes this horrible amendment, or this, this horrible petition and takes away our ability to get funds from its entities. And so I'm working that angle. And if that were the case, and we were able to get that machine, I would try to enter into an interlocal agreement with a number of Wayne County communities that they could use that machine, which would take that eight-step process and automate a substantial amount of it, which would be fantastic. But, but the concern I have there is that the, the maintenance fee on that machine would be $25,000. And so I would want the interlocal agreement to cover the cost of the maintenance agreement so I could split that with multiple jurisdictions. And I don't have that funded either, but I could probably absorb that in my budget, but that's an if, iffy because I have routinely made my, I, I have routinely limited my budget every year. I know it's typically the opposite of what people like to do, which is find ways to grow their budget annually because of inflation, and I may need to in the future. But I've tried to eliminate unnecessary expenditures up to this point. But I think, like I said before, the center can't hold anymore. So the, the short answer is I would ask, well, one, we approve security at the last RBA, so that's done, yay, thank you. Two, there's a motion before the body, and it's been seconded, so there's a question to approve phase one. I would ask that you all support that, if you think it's reasonable. Phase two, I would potentially bring forward at the time we bring forward the other funding requests.
Thanks. So I had three questions, but Stephen asked my last one, so I'm going to show my ignorance on elections here and voting, but just wondering, you're talking about increasing the number of voters per precinct by decreasing the number of precincts. And as someone who has volunteered at the polls before and has seen lines, I'm just a little concerned. I know we have a lot fewer people voting at the polls, but still don't want to see any lines. So just hoping that you can, after you implement this, if you could, after the first election or two, could give a report back to the board about how it went and, you know, how it's working with more voters per precinct.
That is fantastic, and I, and I love it. I love it 100%, you know. My goal, my, my point is, the number of registered voters in a precinct is not the relevant data point. The number of voters at the polls, that's the relative data point. And I do not want the number of voters applying to vote at a poll to grow larger than 1,100 voters in person on Election Day. And so that's my target. And I found that by examining the 2016 election, when I witnessed an hour and a half line at Crescent Academy and an hour and a half line at Field Elementary School.
And at the summit.
And there was long lines at the summit. And I did everything I could to say, can math tell me? And math, Albert Einstein said math is the language of the universe, and he was dead right about that. Math can tell you everything. And mathematics told me exactly how to tell when there's going to be a line. And I was able to kind of quantify that. Because I can assure you, I have no interest in creating lines on Election Day. We're also going to be changing the internal workings of how we administer the polls themselves, and we are implementing, and MIT, I love MIT because they're brilliant, but there's a, it's called queuing theory. It was developed by MIT, and it's been used by Disney and a number of parks for how to appropriately and adequately avoid bottlenecks at key functions throughout an entire assembly process. And so we are using queuing theory to redraw how you administer an election inside of a precinct. Because there are essentially three, and I'm going to stop right now because I'm about to go into queuing theory, and that's not your question.
That's okay, but that's interesting. And then same kind of question, not about lines, but for passport services, you and I talked about this over the phone, but I am hoping that, first of all, I think it will be great if we can start doing passports here at the township. But just would like, and you're probably already planning to do this, but would like some kind of report back to us about how it's going with the revenue.
Yeah. I will certainly will make sure that I update the board on revenue. And it's important that I look at that because, believe it or not, the revenue, the revenue accounts don't actually fall in the clerk's budget. If you look at the amendment I have here, or when you look at your actual board packet, all, all of fee funds are in the, are in the 101 in the general fund section. And so it's easy for a department to say, "We're going to create a position, or I'm going to do this, and it's going to have some revenue associated with it." But because that revenue isn't tied to my budget, I just forget about it. A good example of this would be the March election. We get to submit a bill to the state of Michigan, and they reimburse us. We got over $100,000 back from the state of Michigan for administering the presidential preference primary, but that money doesn't come back to my budget. It goes back to the general fund so that we can spend it on parks and swing sets in the parks, Greg, and sidewalks and things like that. But again, that's another example where the town, where the clerk's office brings revenue in, but we don't consider it a part of the clerk's office because it's in that general fund. Yeah, it goes right to fund balance. So good point, and I will commit to doing that, and I make my commitments.
Thank you.
Else?
Okay. Question on, what is your timeline for this phase two? And, you know, that you were asking, like, is it April 2nd the time that redistricting is completed? Like you would require additional position?
So the redistricting position would be created tonight.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the, you know, the clerk that you were requesting. The redistricting position is today, but when are you, you wanted the Merit Commission to go through the process. When do you want to hire, like, by what time do you want to hire someone? That's, that's...
So my goal would be to follow up with Human Resources. Because I'm sure you are all aware that we are in the final stages of bringing on a Human Resources direct manager. And that person is going to be very busy. Additionally, the Human Resources supervisor is extremely busy. And so my goal would be to have this person in place before maybe May. And so, I mean, the earlier the better, because I want this person to work the elections too, and they need to be trained, you know, they need to be accredited by the Bureau of Elections, they need to go through that, get access to qualified voter file. I would want them to become a notary public. There's a lot of things in the clerk's office that we, that require certifications that we do. Additionally, they'll probably have to issue passports, so I'll want them to be trained in issuing passports if we're all being trained in my office at that point in time. And then they're going to have to, if they don't come with his, with experience in record retention, they're going to need to be trained through the Department of Technology Management and Budget so that they can jump into record retention training and all that stuff. So that's a great question, and I haven't thought about that. My answer would be ASAP, but I would prioritize not stressing Human Resources and not crowding the additional funding requests that are being asked for by other people inside the township. And I would also like to not give primacy for that request over the board goals as well.
Anyone else? Okay, great. There's a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, motion passes.
How much?
Next item on the agenda is G9. Consider approval of two resolutions approving settlement agreements in the national opioid litigation.
Ma'am Supervisor. I move to approve resolution approving, whoa, that's redundant, entry of state local governmental interstate agreement concerning allocation of settlement proceeds in the national opioids litigation and authorize the township supervisor to sign any necessary documents in order to effectuate the settlement and to approve the resolution authorizing entry of participation agreements and partial settlement of the national prescription opiate litigation and authorize the township supervisor to sign any necessary documents in order to effectuate this agreement. The settlement, rather.
Motion made by Clerk Seager, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The board has been asked to adopt two resolutions approving the proposed settlements of some of the defendants in the national opioid litigation, the settlements which we entered into in December 2017. Settlements provide for payments to certain states who will then be responsible for allocating each respective state's share among the participating local governments. In order to participate in the settlement, the township must take action before January 2nd, 2022. Are there any questions or comments? No, Kate?
I'm sure it's not a lot, but any idea how much money Canton might benefit with?
Well, we're estimating right now. If you look in the background, it talks about, the state of Michigan is expected to receive 3.4% of the 22%, 22.7 billion dollars, or 772 million, 772 billion, 259 million, 334, I'm sorry, 772, 259, 334, 259.
I see there's an amount in there, I just thought that the residents might be interested.
Well, okay, yes.
I think it says...
Canton is expected to receive 1.8 million.
Share to, can, yeah, 1.8 million.
Over nine to 18 years.
Right.
Yeah.
So per year, not so much.
It all depends on what the settlement is.
Hundred thousand to 200,000 a year.
A lot of swing sets.
Yep. Lot of parks. Great. Any other questions?
Support for those who suffer from addiction.
That's right, support for addictions, correct.
Can I make a comment? I'm extremely glad the township signed on to this, not just because it's going to bring in revenue, but because those who perpetuated a pandemic prior to this one should be held accountable. I think those, those responsible are getting away. This, this settlement is not, was not as aggressive as it should have been. But what the opiate industry and what the, in particular, specific individuals did to exacerbate that problem, that became a public health crisis, that has resulted in the sucking away of lots of government resources, the ruining of people's lives, creating the cycle of addiction and exacerbating it, has been horrible. I obviously am not alone in this, but I've witnessed a number of people struggle. And with opiates in general, a number of individuals who had no predisposed addictive, you know, no addictions to illicit substances, became dependent upon a number of painkillers after they had a negative, you know, some type of health issue, an injury. And the pushing of opiates was borderline criminal. I, I had a broken leg, and I had surgery, and I refused opiates because I am in, in addiction from alcohol and drug, I am in recovery from alcohol and drug addiction. I refused opiate painkillers. I wouldn't take them, and they didn't want to let me leave the hospital without a prescription for opiate painkillers. Now, I did have to endure a substantial amount of pain, however, I got through it. In the second day, I wish I would have had some type of, maybe like Motrin 800, but I didn't have anything. But I made it through it. And the fact that, that the hospital felt like they had to give me something really made me question the entire healthcare system that we currently have. But this, this was bad, and what has happened... But this was bad, and what has happened over the last couple of decades has been horrible. And so I'm glad that the residents are going to have some money.
I don't think there are any families out there that haven't been touched by the opioid addictions. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G10. Consider approval of 2% across-the-board wage increase for merit full-time, non-union employees and elected officials for the 2022 fiscal year.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve a 2% across-the-board wage scale increase for merit employees and elected officials for the 2022 fiscal year and appointed officials.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. This RBA is intended to address the wage increases for full-time, non-union employees for '22, as well as elected officials. As the Merit Commission meeting held on November 15, 2021, a proposed 2% wage increase, which is consistent with the '22 annual increases for other internal bargaining unions, was recommended for approval by the Merit Commission. Under Ordinance 85, the wages and benefits of classified employees shall be recommended by the Merit Commission, but shall not take effect until approved by the Township Board. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item G11. Consider request to waive the bidding process and approve an agreement for consulting services between Canton Township and Capital Relations LLC with an associated budget adjustment.
I have a question. Who supported that last motion?
Diane.
Don't know what I was doing there for a minute. So excited after the opiate conversation. Ma'am Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve a two-year agreement with Capital Services LLC for consulting services, to approve the budget adjustment as follows, increase expenditures to professional services account for $36,000, and increase revenues to fund balance appropriation to $36,000, and to authorize the township supervisor to sign on behalf of Canton Township.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Snyderman. Thank you. Given the political climate in Wayne County and the number of issues that impact local government, the need to work with a consulting service to advocate for Canton Township with Wayne County has become a necessity. We are requesting that the board waive the bidding process and enter to an agreement with Capital Relations LLC. They are currently the only firm working directly with Wayne County, and the time required for the township to apply for grants through the county will not allow adequate time to complete an official request for proposal process. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item G12. Consider approval of premium bonus to essential employees other than elected officials and the deputy supervisor working during pandemic.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve $1,000 premium bonus to a full-time, to all full-time employees other than elected officials and the deputy supervisor, and a $500 premium bonus to all continuing part-time, part-time staff levels 10 and above, not part of the $2.50-an-hour premium incentive, and all public safety aides who worked during the pay period ending January 22, 2022, and the related budget amendment as listed below. Increase revenues to the other grants federal account of $450,000 and increase expenditures to salaries and wages miscellaneous in the amount of $450,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Since March 2020, the township employees have been going... Oh, it was Kate, I'm sorry. You guys are throwing your voice over here.
Maybe I sound like Diane tonight.
The township employees have been going above and beyond during these extraordinary times to provide excellent services and provide a safe environment for our residents. Our employees have been providing essential services throughout the pandemic, including services from our public safety and fire personnel, keeping our community safe, our public work staff keeping our water and sewer services operational and safe, our leisure services ensuring safe and clean environment for our seniors and residents to enjoy our parks, our administrative staff collecting payments from residents, ensuring payroll, and our vendors are paid timely. In an effort to recognize the hardworking employees, we are requesting the board approve a $1,000 bonus to all full-time employees of the township and a $500 bonus to all continuing part-time staff, part-time staff levels 10 and above who are not provided the $2.50 an hour incentive pay and the public safety aides. This bonus will be paid on January 27, 2022, to those employees who work during the pay period ending January 22, 2022. As this is in eligible use of the ARPA funding, we are recommending the board use this revenue source to pay for the bonuses and approval of a related budget adjustment. Based on the current employees, the total bonus plus FICA taxes is approximately $430,000. We are asking the board to amend the budget by $450,000 to account for changes in personnel or potential accidental emissions of staff from the appropriate classification at the time of this RBA. Any questions or comments? Diane?
I have a comment. I just, it's been such a challenging year, and our staff, our employees have been wonderful helping the residents out. So, you know, I'm really proud that we're bringing this as a board to our employees because it has been such a challenging year. And I commend all of the Canton Township employees for all they've done.
Here, here.
Else? Comments or questions? Michael?
Diane said it perfectly. And, you know, it felt odd approving a 2% wage increase because you see skyrocketing inflation and consumer price index is going out of control, and workers all over the place, the dollar doesn't stretch like it used to. And you factor that in, and what you end up with is that in real wages every single year, individuals end up making less than they did the year earlier, even with a 2% increase. And so it always felt weird that we had approved the 2% increase for merit employees because of how hard everyone's working, the sacrifices people have made during COVID, and the increased costs, especially at a time when the labor shortage is driving up wages in the private sector. And unemployment is at a record low. That said, we came up with this beautiful little proposal, and it wasn't just us. This was a collaborative process with employees and us. And I think, one, the fact that the employees felt comfortable bringing this to us, some of them were in the collective bargaining units. The fact that leadership felt comfortable entertaining that and then bringing it to the board to show that we're investing in the physical capital of the township, but we're also investing in the human capital of the township is perfect. And it tells me where my values are. And it's reflective of my values, that people are struggling in a lot of ways, and we're doing what we can to show our appreciation. So, I want to thank the supervisor and the deputy supervisor for listening to the employees and bringing this forward. And I want to thank the employees who brought this to our attention. And I hope the board approves it.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, and thank you to our partners also, as Clerk Seeger said, that came to us and talked to us about this and partnership we're forming with our unions and merit employees. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Thank you, thank you, board. The last item on the agenda is item G13. Right? Yes. Consider appointment and reappointment to the Planning Commission.
Madam Supervisor, I move to appoint Brian Watkins to the Canton Township Planning Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2024. And if nobody objects, I would move to reappoint Dawn Zuber to Canton Township Planning Commission with a term expiring December 31, 2024.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. Two Planning Commissioners have terms expiring on 12/31/21. Craig Engel has been on the Planning Commission since 2007 and Dawn Zuber since 2014. The board would like to open up the opportunity for more people to serve on boards and commissions and enough qualified applicants applied for them to be able to add someone new now that Mr. Engel has served over four terms. The board is grateful to Mr. Engel for his years of service on the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. The time he gave to the community in this capacity is appreciated. Interviews were conducted in late November by the Board of Trustees Interview Committee, and it was decided to reappoint Dawn Zuber due to her outstanding service in addition to her fulfilling the role of architect on the commission. Brian Watkins was selected to fill Mr. Engel's spot. Does anyone have anything to add?
So, trustee Snyderman and the supervisor and I did interviews, I believe, last year for the Historical Commission. And we were really impressed by one of the applicants, Brian Watkins, and we did not think that he belonged on the Historical Commission. During his interview, he talked a lot about planning. He talked a lot about his experience in Detroit with the Downtown Development Authority. And he seemed like an amazing person, and we couldn't wait to find him a position either on the Planning Commission or the DDA. When we interviewed him last month, it was clear that he belonged on planning. So, I'm really happy that we are able to appoint him to the Planning Commission and do think, do thank Commissioner Engel for his service to the commission over the last few years. I've been able to serve with Dawn Zuber for the last year, and she is amazing. And I think everyone appreciates her input as an architect.
Thank you, I agree. Being on the Planning Commission before, I agree. Stephen?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Yes, I agree with everything with Trustee Foster said. When all of us here joined the board a year ago and some of us four years ago, we had the intentions of opening up these boards and commissions to the entire township, the entire community. And we have some great people on these boards and commissions, the Planning Commission included. But we also don't intend them to be lifetime appointments. And I think that's very important for the community to know. Mr. Engel has done a great job on this committee, and it's nothing that he did that he wasn't reappointed. It's the fact that he has served 14 wonderful years on this committee. And we intend, on all of the commissions and committees, to ensure that there's not, that there's opportunity for new people to be able to join them. So, I'm very excited to have Mr. Watkins joining us on this. As Trustee Foster said, he blew us away with his interview, both of his interviews. And what's really exciting is there's probably three or four other people that we interviewed along with him that we would have been just as excited to appoint. And so we have a good bench for these committees forming. And it's going to be exciting to watch what happens with these, with these commissions in the coming years.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is public comment for three minutes. If you could please give your name, and again, there won't be a back and forth, but we will have board comment after that. So, anyone for a public comment? Sure, go ahead. Please state your name in three minutes. Thank you.
Sure. Pass it out if you want to go ahead and address everybody. What did you say about the last one?
One less, I think I got six there.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Can I take it this way?
Yes.
My name is Anand Kupuri. I live in Norway, but I frequently come to Canton here. And I have a business in solar and energy efficiency. And more than that, I'm very passionate about clean energy, technologies, climate, and everything. So, and I am a member of MICA, and MICA is Michigan Energy Efficiency Contractors Association, and also a member of Great Lakes Renewable Energy Association. Over 10 years since 2010, I have participated in a lot of events in promoting solar, technological advances and all this stuff. Also, participated in MPS, Michigan Public Service Commission, educated related to stuff. So, today, I'm here to, you know, to create awareness about sustainability goals. I'm happy, very happy to learn about Sarah Shock. Very like, like, you know, the same presentation, a lot of talk I can avoid today. But, and the Canton Township is in line with starting a sustainability goal or thinking in the, starting a sustainable, sustainability goals or plans. And I stress the importance of why it is now. And very important is a lot of federal orders, like recently in the last month, infrastructure bill has been passed, which allocates $62 billion to Department of Energy. A lot of those dollars will flow into the state. And the state also started Office of Climate and Energy last month, I think, I think this year. Those also provide help and support for local governments to establish sustainable goals, create plans, and, you know, go in the, you know, forward direction. So, I would stress the importance of, you know, creating a goal and a budget for next year, maybe as a sustainable manager. That jumpstarts, and I echo the comments of the, on the next steps by, put by Sarah Shock. And I'm also volunteer, I contribute to a lot of things. So, I can help in those respect also. And I also point, I was looking at the website, and Canton Leisure Services has a, put forth like 2018, it's a very good plan. And it echoes what is needed to set up the plan and some goals, like, for example, 2030, so, for example, I'm just throwing, 2050 is a national goal, 2030, 2050 is a Michigan goal. And 20, you know, 30 can be a Canton goal.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for waiting, too. It's just a long meeting. Any other public comments online? Any of our attendees? Any public comment online? Public comment, public comment? No public comment? Okay, why don't we start with board comment? Why don't we start down on that end with Kate Berninski, Trustee Berninski?
Just wanted to thank our intern Sarah Shock again for her presentation and for working with us. Had a lot of fun working with her. Also, wanted to wish everyone happy holidays, and also my fellow board members, happy holidays. And I guess I, this is our last meeting until the New Year, so also happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you. Trustee Snyderman?
I don't really have anything to add to that. I echo the happy holidays and happy New Year.
Treasurer Slavens?
I want to echo thanking Sarah for the, for interning for you. And also a reminder about taxes. They are due, we did mail them out. They're due February 14. If you're not able to make it to Township Hall, there's always a drop box. So, please utilize that drop box because it does go into a safe vault. And again, I'll echo what both of the trustees have said, happy holidays. We won't be meeting till next year, and so I just want to make sure that everybody has a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you. Clerk Seeger?
I've spoken a lot at this meeting, and so I will only say I am, I see on the attendees list Canton Township resident. Diane! You! I did not expect that out of you. Oh, that was good. I was going to make a joke, and you just topped mine. I'll pass this summer, I'm done. Speechless.
I echo what trustee Berninski and the other trustees have said, happy holidays and happy New Year to everyone. I just want to take a second to thank Canton Police and the Plymouth Canton School District. Last Thursday were some of the scariest moments. Last Thursday were some of the scariest moments that I could have had as a parent, but I trusted our police department and the police that showed up to support our department and our schools. So thank you very much for an incredible job.
Thank you. Trustee Ganguly?
Yeah, I wanted to echo trustee Foster's comments on how the police department and our chief handled the situation and how he worked with other communities to the scary situation because I live, the high schools are right behind my house. Like it's, I can see it from my backyard. So it was, as a mother of a parent who's, as a parent who doesn't, who had these situations in the past, I really commend them. And I also wanted to commend the Leisure Services for organizing so many holiday events, mini holiday events due to COVID and, you know, they had very successful. I think they had a breakfast with Santa event which was sold out and they did a phenomenal job doing many, many mini events this time because we didn't have the tree lighting ceremony. So that was a great job and I wanted to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thank you. And I would like to add to what trustee Berninski, trustee Foster and Ganguly said. I'd like to also thank our police and fire and MSD and employees who helped with the lockdown last week. I know we had, what do we have, like 20 agencies? Want to talk about that a little bit, who we had come to our assistance that day, Chad?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the kind words. It couldn't be understated. You know, for the 26 years I've been here, the support from the township, residents, the school district and of course the board to give us the opportunity to prepare the time and the financial backing to prepare throughout the years for something like that. So we were well-prepared. The relationships were, you know, in place and with approximately 20 agencies at this point. We'll debrief it tomorrow morning, a little further with our command staff, then again with the school district. So we're very, very happy with how we responded. We did very well. And thank you for the acknowledgement.
Thank you. And like you said, it was, I spoke to Monica Merritt, the superintendent, and she had nothing but praise. Also with public safety, the safety department over there, they were very happy with the cooperation. I know, nobody got hurt. Everybody was kept safe and everybody got home safe that night, thank goodness. As part of that, Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network is presenting a virtual town hall meeting, especially about what has been happening in Michigan and our community this past week. And it's a virtual town hall on school safety and violence, mental health, grief, loss, suicide prevention. And it's this Thursday, December 16, 2021. We'll put it on our website. It's from 4:30 to 6:00. And it's letting people talk about it just to kind of decompress. The school district sent out some resources for parents and students. And this group from our Wayne County, our Wayne County Executive, Warren Evans, did pass this along and offered his help and his team to come to the community. So this is really important if you want to talk about it with anybody or pass it on, but it will be on our website. That night, I mean, the day was not the greatest and it was scary, but it ended well. And we had a great evening to top it off. We nominated three Canton residents into the Canton Hall of Fame. Eva Davis, Dr. Said Taj and Tammy Hagerty. So we were able to give them awards along with other community supporters for other awards there. So that was a, it ended nicely and all of our kids did get home. We also want to say if anyone comes to our lobby, we do have a snow scene which some of our employees put together and I know they had some trouble doing it, but they did put it together, so please take a look at it. But also in terms of what's happening at the school, we did get support with Congresswoman Debbie Dingell and Rashida Tlaib who said they could help us look for community resources for something like this not happening again or, you know, looking into the future and how we support our community. So more to come on that. I'm really excited about that we start to do something and seeing how we can help. But also I'd like to thank the board for all of your hard work. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to this community as well as our boards and committees out there. I know we don't see them a lot, but thank you for all of your work and our volunteers and our staff. So again, as everybody said, happy holidays. Be safe. Remember COVID numbers in Canton are increasing as they are across the country. So please wear your masks. When you go into stores, when you go into closed-in areas, please wear your mask. Think about, I know it's another holiday season where we might have to be separate from families, but please consider doing this so we can stay safe and hopefully someday get through these pandemics. But in the meantime, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Foster. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Adjourn. Thank you.